Good evening. I call this regularly called Dunwoody City Council meeting on June 10th at 6:00 PM to order, unless there's an objection, seeing none, we are called to order. Councilman Secondary, can you please lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance?
For those who are so able, please rise. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief. You're on.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am excited to introduce our newest officer. Sebastian has most recently worked for Town Park Limited as a guest service captain. Prior to this, he was employed as a police officer for the Marietta Police Department and completed internship with Florida Department of Business and Professional Regulation, Division of Alcohol, Beverages, and Tobacco Law Enforcement Division. Sebastian holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Florida State University as well. And he joined our team on May 28th, and everyone has welcomed him into our department. And we're excited to get him started real soon.
Do you need to test it? Or no, I guess I can hear myself. Thank you for joining us here in Dunwoody. We are very honored to have you as a member of our team. And I am going to deliver the oath of office. If you could please raise your right hand and just repeat after me. On my honor, I.
On my honor, I, Sebastian Wright.
Do solemnly swear and affirm that.
Do solemnly swear and affirm that.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Georgia.
The Constitution of the State of Georgia.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Dunwoody, Georgia.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Dunwoody, Georgia.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money.
Due to the state or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
Due to this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
I am not the holder of any office of trust.
I am not the holder of any office of trust.
Under the government of the United States.
Under the government of the United States.
Any other state.
Any other state.
Or any foreign state which I am.
Or any foreign state which I am.
By the laws of the state of Georgia prohibited from holding.
By the laws of the state of Georgia prohibited from holding.
I am otherwise qualified to hold the office of a peace officer.
I am otherwise qualified to hold the office of a peace officer.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia.
I will faithfully follow the legal rules, regulations, policies.
I will faithfully follow the legal rules, regulations, policies.
And procedures of the Dunwoody Police Department.
And procedures of the Dunwoody Police Department.
The city of Dunwoody, Georgia.
And the city of Dunwoody, Georgia.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I love so much about you. I think we're gonna take some pictures here. I'll take this off. And then I'll go up there. I'm gonna say just a few words, sorry, but I have to get back to my seat. Officer Wright, we are so thrilled to have you, as I said before. Congratulations, we think we're the best, we know we're the best community in the entire state of Georgia and beyond. But our public, our residents, take so much pride in our police department and support support our department wholeheartedly. And we, as a council, are here for y'all. If you ever need anything, you see, we're missing a few tonight, but always stop us and let us know if there's anything we can do for you. And again, we are incredibly grateful that you chose us. We know that there are lots of choices out there, but we think you made the perfect choice. And we love that your friends and family are here to support you, and you can expect that same kind of support from our community and our council. So thank you again and congratulations. All right, public comments? I think I'll call the cards. If you were here to make public comment, okay. Eric's not here, Shealy, there's somebody with a card. If you'll just bring it up, up to Jessica, that would be wonderful. That's not a problem. And Councilwoman Kelly from Sandy Springs has joined us tonight. You'll have three minutes if you'll approach the podium. And there's a little clock that'll tell you how much time. There is, there is a little clock. It's a relatively new addition.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you for having me. Where's my, oh, there. Great. Well, good evening, esteemed mayor and city council for the city of Dunwoody. I'm Melody Kelly. I represent District Two in Sandy Springs. Many of you know me, but let me tell you why I'm here today. I am here because I want to thank you all for being willing to join forces and share the Juneteenth holiday this year with the city of Sandy Springs on the City Springs campus. I just want to take the time today to make sure your organization, you all know, and your broader community know that you all are very, very welcome to be a part of this event. And I'm actually really excited to spend time with you all on June 19th at 5:00 PM. I'm actually touring perimeter cities, so I have to be in Tucker by 7:00 when their meeting starts. I just want to tell you a little bit about the event. This year's event is going to showcase three spaces on our City Springs campus. It will feature a stage production inside Byers Theater and immersive digital art augmented reality exhibition in the lobby that features some work from Dunwoody High School students, as well as North Springs High School and Riverwood High School in Sandy Springs. And there's also going to be family-friendly, festival-like activities on the city green. I'm also excited to share that your very own Mayor Deutsch will be delivering remarks. And Create Dunwoody has been a valued partner, so thank you for connecting us there as well. I'll end by saying, my fellow elected leaders, it's not very often that our nation adds a holiday. It offers us an opportunity to do something different, fresh, new. I am here in that spirit and excited to come together. Thank you all for listening. I have some actual invitations for you, even though I know some of y'all can't be here, so I'll give them to the city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Ali, I know you're here. I just can't see around the post. You always sit there and I can't see you. You'll have three minutes. Are we ready? Okay. We're ready, sorry.
It's not started.
Oh, it's not started, okay.
There we go. City Council, thank you for having me. I wanted to bring up an issue I kind of brought up a couple of months ago. But, you know, I just kind of wanted to keep it abreast ahead of you. So unfortunately, Dunwoody is having a massive influx of homeless people or residents that are not Dunwoody, I guess, residents, just kind of surrounding the streets and different things, as our resident walker who walks around all the time, including, you know, late evenings and takes his stroll. I have noticed a dramatically larger amount, more and more and more, what it appears to be, probably Atlanta residents finding their way to Dunwoody. As the mayor said earlier, and I could not agree more with, we have a fantastic community, a great community, probably the best community. And fortunately, some other people are noticing this. That stated, there is a problem that's being created. And the problem that's being created is unfortunately, these individuals who come into our city cause traffic issues. I know Dunwoody's, the PD had to respond to some things there. They're causing issues not only with just simple things as loitering, but they're having issues with like the QT. I've seen them walk in, attempt to try to convince customers to buy them cigarettes, beer. There are other issues that arise in the sense of solicitation of whatever the individuals around. We have the panhandlers, a bigger issue as well as that we're having issues with them interrupting businesses. I know Dunwoody had to respond, I think, to the prospect a while back ago, an individual decided he wanted to walk in, make a lot of noise, walk out, come back, walk in again, make a lot of noise. So ultimately, it's, as most cities do have it, we're having a little bit more of a issue with homeless people that are not Dunwoody residents come in, camp out here. Now, the solution that I'd actually kind of would like to stare towards is if there's anything we can do to help these people, I would not mind. I personally, as a taxpayer, don't even mind some of my tax money or an increased tax money and figuring out some way we can actually truly help these people. And to be clear, not a handout. You know, I was thinking the other day, just with the city and how we're growing and expanding, if there's any, you know, nominal jobs we can give them, scrubbing street signs, doing something for any member who wants to come here and contribute to the community, I would be open if there's anything we can do to maybe just kind of figure that out. Again, it's just an idea. I'd be more than hopeful that we can help them. Now, for the ones who want to come here and just cause issues or break our ordinances or not contribute anything at all to the community but just want to come here, I have looked into our city ordinances, and they are very strict but not harsh. So there's a lot of violations going on with people camping out, doing what they're doing. These are all violations of the city ordinances. And most of the time, it requires someone coming in there and a police officer giving them just a warning, stop doing it. And if they can't stop doing it, then they come back again and then they issue a citation. So their solution is if we can figure some way to help them, great. If we can't, I think we need to put our foot down and maybe figure a way to get the chief and the police department some more funds, so they can maybe send out officers to kind of help protect our city ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Hirsch, and I rounded up, so you get five minutes. You gotta wait for them to reset the clock thingy, though. When you see it, when we're ready, just let me know. You start, thank you.
Well, the city of Dunwoody has tried its best to ignore the fact that we had a sexual predator working in our police department. Lieutenant Fidel Espinoza was held up as a role model by many of you here on council, and he was celebrated as the champion leading the Christmas for Kids program, the Explorers program, and was the face of the Dunwoody Police Department as our Public Information Officer. And despite numerous complaints to HR from other officers, he was untouchable. You all loved him and trusted the judgment of our police chief, Billy Grogan. Yet have any of you publicly ever shared any concern or apologized for Espinoza's grotesque actions against other officers and the harms he has done to actual good cops who are now no longer serving our city? Each of you either cowardly buried your heads in the sand or relied upon the supposed good judgment of Grogan. You all allowed Grogan to investigate himself when it became public that Espinoza was demanding genital photos of his subordinates. And no surprise, Grogan said he himself did nothing wrong, and that there was no damage done with Espinoza's actions, as it was all just boys being boys, locker room talk. But do any of you still believe it's just locker room talk to take a photo of another person using the bathroom and then share that picture? I hope and pray that none of my daughters is ever under your supervision, as all of you have failed the city miserably. Lastly, last week, unlike the city of Dunwoody, a jury of nine men and three women, 12 of our fellow DeKalb residents found that Fidel Espinoza was indeed liable for assault and invasion of privacy against one of our own officers, a $180,000 judgment against him. What a shame that none of you have demonstrated any regard for that officer or any of the others who have complained about Espinoza. What does it take to wake up and admit your bad judgment? It should be noted that I asked our city representative to provide a comment after the verdict, but was only told that the city of Dunwoody was no longer part of the lawsuit. So there was no comment, which was due to sovereign immunity, lucky us. But all the actions of our lieutenant were done while he was a City of Dunwoody employee, and the city has spent at least $73,000 of our money defending this creep. Whose idea was that? How much more have we allocated to defend this guy and his legal fees? No comment from the city? You owe the public an explanation on why you chose to defend this disgusting person and how much we spent and how much we plan to spend on it. You know, if you want to be transparent or something like each of you claim to be. You are aware that there are many more legal matters that our city is facing related to Espinoza, and you can no longer hide behind your deliberate ignorance of the matter. Our city employed a vile man, and our police chief did not even fire him because you all let him get away with it. Whistleblowers are not the bad guys. Which brings me to my lawsuit, which I'll quickly remind you of, where Officer Pham essentially held employees of a tire store hostage. There was nothing in the police report, there was nothing written up about him, so I tried to get his text messages. I was told by the city that there were none, but it turned out that was a lie. I believe residents of our city have a right to know and deserve to know what occurs in our city, and state law actually makes it very clear as well. When I asked for the messages, our city clerk Sharon Lowry, Eric Shealy, and Ginger LaPage knew there were indeed text messages but lied to me, and they conspired to hide them from me because it might implicate Chief Grogan. Something that I just learned in my lawsuit, Sharon Lowry now admits that there were text messages. Y'all may not be aware of this. Sharon Lowry admits that there were text messages despite telling me there were none, because she says she called the phone company to ask about those text messages, and it turns out they do exist. She said that they didn't exist, and Eric Shealy said they don't exist, but she, in her response to my lawsuit, said that they don't. That's not true. The item that I emailed y'all and handed to y'all just a minute ago is a page from one of the courses that Sharon took that we paid for her to take, says, "What if a private firm is holding the records?" It says, "A government body cannot prevent the examination or copying of public records by contradicting with, by contracting with a non-governmental body to perform any of its duties or functions." In other words, in my last 30 seconds, Sharon in the city's case is, well, we don't have the text messages, the phone company has them, so we're fine. That's not true. And this is from the course that Sharon took and the state law. The city's going to get demolished if my case goes to jury, just like the Espinoza one. So you need to decide what you're gonna do, if you're gonna show any courage, or you're just gonna keep relying on people who also lie to us. Thank you.
Mr. Wintermantle, you step up. You'll have three minutes, sir. And give us one second to reset the clock. Okay, well, thank you.
If I can, I'll come back.
Hold on one second while we get ready.
Ready?
Let's see, are we ready?
Mayor, council members, my name's Martin Wintermantle. I live at 1723 North Springs Drive, North Springs subdivision, the adjoining lot to the corner house at 1731, which is being developed. Very large home, fully in compliance with codes. Unfortunately, there are so many issues, in my view, that have arisen as a result of compliance with codes that I think it's time for the city of Dunwoody to reexamine codes and their implementation. First of all, let's just talk about trees. This was a fully wooded, six-tenth of an acre lot with 150-year-old oak trees, specimen trees, all of which were cut down, clear cut. Secondly, and there's no, you know, the builder is more than able to do that. I'm not arguing that the builder is right. He owns a property. Topography. This is, in a sense, a bit of a disaster. You can cut and fill on a property any way you choose to, which is exactly what has happened in this instance. The property sloped from the front to the back, 300 feet, and was consistent with the topo on my property. And my property slopes to an even lower level. What has happened is they built a very large house, taking a lot of dirt out of where the basement would be, is now. Cut from the back, where they're gonna have to build about a five-foot retainer wall to create a flat backyard, because it's sloped from the back to the front, so that they can put a pool in if whoever the purchaser is desires. But what is really egregious is that they have taken all of this dirt and increased the elevation of the front yard by seven feet, so that now they can build from the front porch up another 35 feet, which is exactly what they have done. And it's in compliance, because they created a very major berm in the front yard. Elevates the house above my property by a full story and a half, at the property line. My property is another five feet below when you get to my house, but 20 feet away, there is a retaining wall and a walkout basement. And between that point and my property, and this is the third area that I have real concerns about code-wise, is drainage. The silt screen, which has been put around the property in its entirety.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Can I finish this last point? This is the important point, if you don't mind. The silt screen, which has been put around the property, has been built up with dirt on his property by a foot and a half, which elevates it a foot and a half above my topography. And then they created a ditch to create runoff down to North Springs Drive. Point being that topos need to be recognized and not modified. This foot and a half is a major issue. I've talked to the inspector, I've talked to the code people. They have not given me any answer. None.
Thank you, Mr. Wintermantle. Mr. McLeod, who's our community direct, community development director, will meet you at the back of the room. Thank you. That concludes the cards I have for public comment. And we will have another public comment section at the end of the meeting. Next, first, I want to recognize we have some scouts in the room. I can see two. If you don't mind standing up, if you don't, if you don't want to, you don't have to, and just tell us what troop you're from and what badge you're working on. Good job.
I'm Alan Esco. I've been working on my Eagle, and I'm working on Substituting.
Thank you. We appreciate all the good work that our scouts do across the city as they work towards their badges and their honors. So thank you for being here. Next is Mr. Linton with our city manager's report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is the report that concludes June 7th. The Parks Department, we have our two bridges parked splash pad opened on the May 24th, and it will remain open from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM through September the 22nd. We also have our Waterford Park Playground. The playground and the new equipment will be completed by the end of the year. That's been ordered and ready to go. Also, we have our new shade structures are completed at Brook Run Park, the baseball fields, those are now up. The many upcoming events in the parks, one I'm gonna point out, just so people can be aware of these, which is the picks in the park. We have Kung Fu Panda on July the 5th, and as you look at the report, you'll see all the different events. And Mayor, thank you for your kind words, one of the events we had this past weekend. And we do have outstanding staff in that department, and I really appreciate the council's support of those individuals. The American Heart Association Heart Saver First Aid Course has been successfully completed by four of our staff members. So we want to be sure those members are out in the public, do have these life-saving methods in terms of using first aid, CPR, and the AED equipment. For the police, we have our four public safety ambassadors. The civilian positions were approved, and the goal for that start date is the 1st of July. Our Special Investigations Unit with one sergeant and three officers was also approved. And that will be some internal promotions going on in that, along with some transfers, and that will start in July the 1st. Here again, this provides additional opportunities for our officers, and as y'all know, that's part of our retention plan, which provides additional opportunities for people so they stay with the city of Dunwoody for their career. Our real-time crime center is in the final stages of construction, and quite a bit of activity going on within the building to get that up and running. There is a link within your report that has the crime stats, and that's, of course, available to the public as well, and that is from, that goes through April. The paving for 2024 has started. We're also working on construction for pedestrian beacons in North Peachtree Road and Perimeter Center West. This week is entering into the final, I'm gonna call it the final 10 days of our project at Georgetown Gateway. The final paving is going on there. The weather is good this week, so the majority of that should be completed this week. And what we're doing this week is we're working on driveway leveling and the ramps for the driveways that are asphalt-based, and we're gonna have that done. I did meet with staff earlier today on that. There will be a few traffic delays this week in that area. After that, once that work's completed, the remaining work should be done without any lane closures in any particular direction. But this week, there may be some lane closures. We're only using, we're down to one lane total, and there will be some delays there. Ashford Dunwoody Path, Phase One, the sod is being installed now, and also the pavers are to be installed later this month in the plaza areas. If you haven't had the opportunity as a citizen to drive down Ashford Dunwoody and look at that path, it's very amazing how it's gonna look when everything's completed. And here again, that's part of our walkability in the perimeter area, so people can get across in front of the mall as a mode of transportation. The Art Center's parking lot is gonna be repaved in August of this year, and it's been a long time coming for many people to have that done, and it is well-needed. That will be done. As the Sandy Springs council member mentioned earlier, we will have a tent at Juneteenth, which will be on Sandy Springs Campus at their green, or City Springs as they call it, and that tent will be staffed with some members from the city of Dunwoody. And that's on June the 19th. Under community development, the staff is investigating several instances of homeowners taking trees out, as a citizen mentioned earlier tonight, in the city's stream bank buffer. We do have information on our website about this for people before they cut trees, to please check with the city, understand where the stream buffers are within your property. Dunwoody does have quite a few streams that run through the city. And before anyone starts work, please call City Hall and talk to somebody in community development. Prior to that, save yourself many headaches of cutting trees on your property prior to permission. The Household Hazardous Waste Recycling Event that we had this year was the most successful since the pandemic started. So we had 473 residents participate, and once again, this was the largest one since before the pandemic. We had Park Place over across from the mall, courtyard ribbon cutting a couple of weeks ago. If you haven't had the opportunity to go over there, I know we had the council over there with the ribbon cutting. It's a phenomenal place. Once again, it's a private space, public, what do we call it, Mayor, we call it the public gathering space.
Privately-owned, public space.
There you go.
There you go. Hops.
So it's, so it's a really nice place. It always has been nice, but now you have a nice new area. And what's unique about Dunwoody is how we revitalize these existing areas to repurpose them as times change. And people want to gather in a different fashion.
And when you say we, you don't mean we, it was all the developer.
All the developers, yes.
In this case, it was Eden. We didn't have any skin in that game.
Sure. And privately done, yes. The, um, perimeter area report was published in the May issue of Georgia Trend. I believe all the council members received a copy of that report. The finance has our monthly report from April twenty twenty-four can be found at the link within your document. Also, within the financial website is the ARP and the CARES Act. Webpages have been updated with all the activity through the end of April. And also the Audit Committee convened on May the thirteenth at three thirty at City Hall and had an update from their internal auditor on, um, on activities within the city. The twenty twenty-four Milledge Rate Public Hearings are scheduled for Wednesday, June twenty-sixth at six PM, Thursday, June twenty-seventh at eight AM and Monday, July eighth at six PM. Municipal Court, this year, we, once again, we've kicked off our amnesty program for the months of June and July. We mailed over five hundred notices and we advertised that on social media and local news. I know our court clerk, Nerlaunjo Huntington, was on, uh, TV sixty-nine talking about that. Also, um, we have about a thousand failure to appear warrants out there. So this is an opportunity, once again, for anybody with a failure to appear warrant for the city of Dunwoody to come and pay that without any additional penalties or at the risk of being, um, taken to, to jail for a failure to appear. It was funny when I spoke to the clerk earlier today, she said, we've gotten a lot of calls and some of them are for people outside the city. But it just shows that we're, our word is getting out there. So they, we tell them, not every city does an amnesty, amnesty program. It's something that I felt very strongly about when I came here. Cause we really want people to, you know, basically to pay their fines and not be burdened with getting pulled over in another town and have to come back to Dunwoody to face the judge. This is an opportunity to get around that. The city also has filled three police officer positions as well as two positions in the technology department, which is a lead system engineer and a systems administrator. Those are in-house now. And the final thing I'll note is just our wellness committee sponsoring our biometric screenings. Once again, it's a, um, it's a good thing that the council supports for our employees to be sure the health stays. Uh, they have good health and, uh, taking care of their medical benefits. So with that, I'm glad to answer any further questions the council may have.
Anybody? I, I, um, I wanted to, Joe, sorry, I didn't see you. You moved.
Thank you, Eric. Um, again, I appreciate the detail and I keep on continuing to let the citizens know that if you want to see the activities that the citizen, that, that the city's operating on more than just what's on an agenda here. There's a lot, lot more going on to look at that monthly report. And if you have any questions, contact our city manager or the department heads and have a conversation, meet with them, learn how their city works and how the budgets flow and how the whole things happen and everything else. It's just, so it's really transparent and I, again, greatly appreciate that. And in the spirit of transparency, I know the report can continue adding, adding to detail. But, um, there's one, one activity I know that the staff has been working on along with other officials. Is one on a peeler road path plan. And if you could potentially share some information, I know it's in flight. The process is still ongoing. We're seeking engagement, but I, could you just kind of give me a quick little outline of where we've been? Where we're going, you know, and what's happening in the, in the, in the citizen engagement and the due diligence, just of that process? Thank you.
Sure. And I did meet, um, with the Public Works Director earlier today to go over these points, which is the peeler path project and the citizen engagement portion. And this goes back to starting in May, I mean, excuse me, in March of twenty twenty-two. That's when the project was first advertised for public comment on the city's website. Following in June of twenty-two, staff attended the Dunwoody Homeowner Association Meeting and answered questions about the project. Following in, then about a year later, May of twenty twenty-three, we presented the Trail Master Plan, which was adopted by the city council at that point. And then in June of twenty-three, we presented a concept design at the, at a public meeting of city council. From that point, from June of twenty-three till April of twenty-four, we've had individual meetings and communications with adjacent property owners, including meeting of several homeowners. With this, with, with me and with staff and the department heads. On May of twenty-four, we had a community meeting was held. And then in June, uh, we were accepting now, we're accepting written comments from the community meeting. So we've done quite a bit of engagement. This fall is kind of a process we try to do with most of our projects, is to try to engage citizens as much as we can. You know, the, the form, citizens have to, you know, if you'll look at the website, check with us at, at the city, talk to your neighbors. There's usually some information out there that we can get. We try to do the best we can on getting that information out there. Of course, the website is our best source for information at any point in time.
And the next, and the next steps, where we're going with, with that feedback? What would, what's, what's the next steps after that with that feedback?
Well, at that point, we'll, we'll just, we'll continue to take in the feedback, get back with the city council and come up with a, with an overall plan for that.
Right. So just to close the loop that we're us, we're consolidating all the feedback and we'll be presenting that feedback in a public setting with all that information. So we'll have all the concerns and variables out there.
Absolutely.
Conversation. All right, great. Um, second question, um, I know we're going to be presenting, I saw the Village Crossroads contract to be presented in July. I'm really excited about that. But we know that when we first had that concept design, there were a lot of high, medium and low, uh, scope of design efforts. And, um, I believe that we got a grant sometime last year or two, uh, from the ARC, approximately about six point seven million. And in SPOST funding, we do have allocation of four point seven million. That'll be totally accrued by the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-eight. So four point seven from SPOST, I'm approximately, I'm here, here about six point seven federal. You know, it's kind of following a little bit what we've done on the Shambly Dunwoody corridor there, uh, in Georgetown. Right? That was, we applied.
That's right.
Federal.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah. And of course, we know the federal takes for longer. You got to learn a lot more paperwork, a lot more, a lot more red tape. In light of that, I do know that we also just also applied for a second grant for that project. Right? Right, Eric? We just recently.
That's correct.
And so when we're going to be presenting this contract in July, I know that we've been told that we shouldn't be worried about money. We should just be aspirational and just ask for what the end state, we want to be as, as the leadership of the city. But, um, I, I kind of want to hold off a little bit on putting a contract out until we find out potentially if we get the second contract, uh, a bid, uh, I'm sorry, second grant from the federal government to see what, what the total pot may be. And of course, we know that infla, uh, it's costing a lot, lot more. It's like thirty percent more for concrete than it was two years ago, et cetera. Right? So we know that that inflationary things are going on. If we can't be building this till maybe, you know, twenty twenty-nine. You know, what does that realistically look like? What it would cost today, we're going to add another thirty percent of that cost and then add another twenty percent for variance. So I would like to be really conservative in the scope of what we can actually do, given what funding we have available. So we look at this contract to be presented. I'd like, if I'm, if I'm bidding for a contract and we're going to pay for that design, kind of sort of would like to maybe find out first what, what, what that funds are going to look like in circa twenty twenty-nine when it maybe get built or something. So that's just my.
Sure.
Perspective. Thanks.
Yes. Um, I wanted to make a point. People are getting their property assessment, um, assessments in the emails. And in my case, for example, my assessment went up like one thousand dollars. But it appears that my bill is five hundred and change higher, maybe closer to six hundred. But I want to remind people than last year, but I want to remind people, and some of this will depend on your exemptions and your assessed value. Last year, the governor gave a one-time credit to, uh, people, well, to homeowners, people with a homestead exemption. Um, uh, yeah, the homestead exemption. If you had the homestead exemption last year on your property, you got a one-time exemption from the governor. And it's going to look like, cause it was a little confusing, cause like I said, my value didn't change very much, that all of a sudden your bill is much higher. But for me, if I looked back two years, it was very similar to twenty-one's assessment. Cause this is, or, you know, the bill for, that we paid for twenty-one. So we're gonna need to message that. I've already seen a lot of confusion, but it's just a reminder that last year you got a one-time credit from the governor that they did not repeat this year on your property tax bill. That's all. Um, consent, well, consent agenda. Um, I was not here at the last meeting.
Moved to approve?
Wait, Joe was not here at the last meeting now.
Move to approve?
Second.
Move by, um, Tom, second by Joe. Any discussion of, okay, that's fine.
I, I just want to make a point in case anyone downloaded the packet last week. We did correct one error to the minutes.
Yes.
That was published today. So.
Right.
Just be aware, it's a minor issue, but just want to share.
Let's correct it. Question?
I'll make another point on that. Those minutes are draft minutes until we approve them. So that does stay in flux until this meeting when they are approved.
Thank you. Any questions, comments about the one items? All right, all in favor, say aye. Uh, any opposed, hearing none. The consent agenda is approved unanimously. Oh, you're ready to go. Yeah, I do too. I'm.
So I was still waiting for my.
Oh, are y'all ready?
For my name to be read out.
Oh, I'm sorry. You walked up and I thought you were ready. So, yeah, we're ready. Cause this is a discussion item. Nothing needs to be read. Go ahead.
Perfect. Uh, good evening, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, council. Yeah, this is a discussion item and it's in response to changes in state law regarding our permitting fees. Um, this is House Bill four sixty-one. And that made changes to how municipalities can calculate permitting fees. So state overall has always been setting the parameters for how we can calculate permit fees. This changes an aspect of that and I'll go into that, um, as part of this presentation. Normally, these types of changes have an effective date of a half year or a year out. This one is really unusual. It was signed by the governor on May sixth. Uh, the effective date is July first, which is, uh, was only signed about four weeks ago. And it'll become active, uh, in four weeks. You know, we have to do, um, the discussion item and, and the read for this. So it's an impractical, um, requirement really. Um, as because of this timeline, there's no official, uh, guidance yet, neither from the State Department nor from GMA or similar regulations. It's a very unusual, uh, way of, of doing it. And it falls, of course, into the middle of our fiscal year two. Um, so I want to take this, uh, discussion item to give an overview to your, on what the changes in the state law are and how we're planning to address it and then ask for your feedback. And eventually we'll bring it back, uh, to the first city council meeting in, in July. And again, state law has always, you know, it provides the parameters, how we can calculate permit fees. Um, our current practice is, and this is for the base permit fees. We have really sort of, uh, uh, a, a grab bag of permit fees depending on specific project. We have administrative fee that goes on every project. We have, for instance, demolition fees if there's demolition. We have sprinkler fees if there's sprinklers, but we have a main permit fee, which for large project is the bulk of the overall, uh, revenue that we have while permitting. And we calculate this currently based on the valuation of a project. So you can really sort of see this as, uh, the construction value. So a very expensive construction project pays a very high permit fee. A small, cheap construction project pays a small permit fee. And so we, we use the valuation of the project as one parameter. And then we have a fee, which is for residential, six dollars per thousand dollars of valuation that we charge for commercial. It's eight dollars per thousand dollars of valuation. So the state is prohibiting this practice moving forward for permits with a valuation of under seventy-five thousand dollars. So we can continue to do this for the larger projects, for the high streets, for the, the build outs of office spaces. But for large projects, we cannot do this anymore. We'd have to do instead, we either have to charge a flat fee for these types of permits or we have to charge the value of our direct labor and indirect costs. So it's the, it's the hourly rate plus the value of the benefits plus, uh, the value of the computers, the buildings, the cars and so forth. So those are the two options. Um, we're recommending as part of this to, uh, implement this by sort of keeping everything as is for permits over seventy-five thousand square feet, because it's a fair way, uh, to do it as a percentage of the, of the construction value. And for the permits that are impacted, so valuation of seventy-five thousand dollars to do a flat fee. And it's part of partially a pragmatic approach because doing the direct costs, charging hours worked plus increments, um, would require the creation of entirely new system to capture those costs. Currently we're not, uh, tracking the, the time of inspection takes, for instance, or the time a plan review takes. So operationally, doing it this way would be problematic at this time with the implementation timeline that we have. Um, so for the flat fee, what we're proposing to do is a revenue neutral approach. So we're not wanting to use this, this change in the state law to make any, uh, you know, to increase permitting revenue or decrease permitting revenue. Cause it's mid-budget year, we want to do this, we're in a revenue neutral way. So what we did is we looked into all permits in January twenty twenty, so about four and a half years that were under seventy-five thousand dollars. There was approximately six hundred and fifty permits. We split them up into residential and commercial. For residential, the average of all permits under seventy-five thousand dollars was thirty-one thousand, hundred and thirty dollars. And then again, I mentioned those six dollars per thousand dollars of valuation. So if you do the valuation here of thirty-one thousand times six dollars divided by thousand, that gets you to a permit fee of a hundred and seventy. So that was the average permit fee that we charged over those four and a half years. For commercial, the equivalent was three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. So in the past, we charged more for commercial than for residential because the valuation is higher. We're proposing to maintain this and charge a flat fee of a hundred and seventy-five and three hundred and fifty. You'll see kind of that these are slightly higher than, than the averages. And proposing to do this because we used the average is looking back four and a half years. And inflation, uh, was fairly substantial in, in the construction sector and in, in our cost as well. So proposing to use this to, to round up the fees to the next twenty-five dollar increment. And I want to show this here, how this works in practice. And I want to show this on examples for the types of projects that this impacts. And then what the, what the monetary implications are. And I have two residential ones and they were part of your package too and part of the memo. Um, then I have two commercial ones. Again, like this does not impact new construction. New construction is more expensive than seventy-five thousand dollars. This is not a complete house remodel. That's also more expensive. This is sort of a selective change to specific rooms in, in your house. First example I have here is a bathroom renovation, small bathroom, forty square feet. Then the valuation we take from the building code and it's based on two parameters. One is the construction type. This is a wood building, is a metal building and so forth. And then the use group, which is what is the land use or what is the, what is the use of the facility? In this case, construction type five B, use group R three, which is residential and one and two family. In the building code, we'll find the valuation per square foot here of a hundred and eighteen dollars. And then to obtain the valuation, we use this multiplier. We use the square footage, in this case forty square feet, gets us to a valuation of four thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And then we multiply it this with our six dollars per thousand dollars fee multiplier. And this gets us for a small project like this, the fee is twenty-eight dollars and forty-three cents. And that's a valuation based fee. You know, this is what we're charging currently. Under the new flat fee, a hundred and seventy-five dollars. So that would be an increase for a project like this. Now let's look at a larger residential project. This is second floor addition of part of a. This is second floor addition of part of a, or partial second floor addition to a house. Six hundred square feet, building code, construction type stays the same, use group is the same. These are both single family homes. The valuation, uh. Evaluation or per square foot valuation, the building code is the same, a hundred and eighteen dollars. Multiplied by six hundred square feet in this example. Equals a project valuation of seventy-one thousand and seventy dollars. Multiplied by six, uh, by six dollars per thousand dollars valuation gets us a permit fee of four hundred and twenty-six. Dollars and forty-two cents. And proposed flat fee would be a hundred and seventy-five dollars. So for a project like that, there would be a. A decrease in the. In the permit fee. So for the smallest projects, there would be an increase. For the larger projects, but not large projects, but for the larger projects in this group. There would be an increase in the permit fee. And the same is true, and I'll do this a bit more abbreviated and functions exactly the same way. We take the valuation per square foot out of the international building code. We multiply it by the square footage. We have here a small project, small commercial project. A really small restaurant suite, kitchen remodel, hundred square feet. Valuation of sixteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. Permit fee used to be a hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-four cents. Under the proposed flat rate, he would be three hundred and fifty. And then same restaurant, but now like a guest room remodel. Four hundred square feet, like very small guest room. Uh, gets us a valuation of sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. Old fee five hundred and forty-three point seventy-eight and new fee three hundred and fifty. So there would be a, a decrease for the larger of the two projects, while there would be an increase for the smaller of the two. Overall, and I've, I've, you know, you've seen it in the examples. Previously, we had proportionate fees for all projects in the city. Um, which was. In, in our mind, a fair way to do it because the smaller the project, the less it pays, the bigger the project. Uh, the more it pays, um. So this would go away for projects for permits in this specific group. Uh, flat fee would be, flat, flat fee would be charged. Um, we're still proposing, and this is, um. Important to us, we're still splitting it into residential and commercial, which maintains the advantage for. Home remodels that, that someone does, uh, because residential permits historically used to be cheaper. And tend to have a lower valuation. We're proposing to maintain this, to not put residents sort of at a disadvantage here. But of course, especially for the smallest projects, the really small projects that you do. There will be a noticeable increase in, in permit fees. Overall, we're rebidding the contract for community development services next year, the first half of next year. And as part of that, uh, we'll have to take a look at the permit fees again and, uh, we certainly want to take a look at it in a. In a more systematic way, but with a deadline as it is, um. We're proposing to do the simple flat fee. Moving forward. And again, this is today, more to solicit, uh, comment from you all to get, get feedback. Uh, we would bring it back to, uh. For adoption on July eighth. You notice that there is a, a July first date for the state legislation. So even if July eighth we approve, the new permit schedule will have a time period in there. Between July first and July eighth, we technically have a fee schedule. Adopted that doesn't meet the, the state, the state law at that time. Like all of our surrounding municipalities are in exactly the same boat. I mean, we're ahead of. Of everybody else that we know of on this, but there will be a, a time period there where. Will, uh, we're technically charging a fee that isn't. Uh, to state law, we're aware of it, we're working with the legal team and finding a solution for this. We have on average a hundred and thirty. Uh, permits per month and in the summer months, we tend to have slightly more. Uh, ten of those would be impacted approximately, um, so in, in those. Couple of days, we probably have a handful of permits. We will have to either reimburse them to an extent or we'll have to readjust their permit fees. And we're working on, on getting that ironed out. Um, to just like use this in an opportunistic manner, um. What, what we want to do here, since we're opening up the permit fees, um, is. In two thousand thirteen, the city took over. Um, fire marshal type inspections and plan reviews. This is your sprinkler system. This is, um. Fire alarms and, and so forth, this type of stuff. The city. Reviews all fire related issues within buildings. Only the exterior of a building, so like the fire access gets sent to the fire marshal. At DeKalb County, which tremendously helps with, um, keeping permits on track. So we've charged at the time in two thousand thirteen, as part of that. The city has adopted, uh, fees that were pretty much a carryover from the DeKalb County fees. We haven't changed those fees since then. But what we haven't done at the time was incorporated into the fee schedule. The fee schedule is the main document that we have on the website that. You know, that builders will look at to get an idea what they have to pay. We currently don't have these fees in the mains, in the main schedule that. You know, they adopted their valid fees for the, for the city of Dunwoody. But to make it easier on our staff and to make it easier on any applicant here. What we're wanting to do as part of that is copy paste from over here into the main fee schedule. It's part of the package and it's highlighted in yellow. So no substantive changes to it, no increases, no decreases. Just to put it into main P schedule to make it a bit easier to find. And, uh, with this, I'd like to conclude the presentation and I'm ready for any questions.
Yeah, Rob.
Um, thanks for the presentation. So I've got, I guess. A couple of questions and then kind of just a, a point. One is, you, we're, we're revisiting these in twenty twenty-five, so it may be moot at this point. But it looks like our old fees. Kind of self-adjusted for inflation based on the value of the property. These new fees won't. Do we need to look at some way of indexing these fees so they'll self-increase or I guess should we? Expect to have to revisit this every couple of years to tweak these up? To account for changes in property. So that's just kind of a question to be thinking about right now. Since we're going to revisit these in twenty twenty-five, I don't think it's critical with this set right here. Um, and the second question is, this is for projects, um, valued under seventy-five thousand dollars. I'm assuming we're not changing our fee structure for. More expensive projects. Is that accurate?
That, that's correct.
Okay. And then the last one, I guess, is just maybe my sense for. Potentially a narrow subset of, um, applicants. Between July first and July eighth, then you'll work with legal, they'll come up with the solution, but. For sure, if somebody's fee would have gone down, I think we ought to be reimbursing. Um, whatever we charge or, um. Delaying receipt of the fee, um, until the eighth, until it's approved. I, I, I trust you to work with legal on it, but I. For sure, don't let somebody miss the window to save a few dollars if they can. So anyway, those are my questions and thoughts.
Uh, Tom.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Yeah, it's, um, you know, it's a. Some people are going to win and some people are going to lose, right? If you have a small project, you're paying significantly more for your permit. I mean, and some of the larger people are going to. Pay, pay less. Um, I, I have a question though. Um, we got a legislative update from, uh, GMA. Uh, saying that a square footage calculation is allowable. So how is? What they're referencing is a square foot, because I, I, my understanding of the bill was, was tied. You couldn't tie. Uh, the permit fee to the value of the project. Uh, so what is, how is a square footage calculation different from? What you have listed in the, in the memo and the presentation as the old, uh, fee structure?
So we have in, in some cases, for instance, for the, the fire marshals. These, we have some fees that are less for small projects. And more for some other projects. So they are for like less than twelve thousand square feet, let's say. Um, the initial review of a life safety accessibility plan is a hundred dollars. Or something more than twelve thousand square feet that is a hundred, uh. Yeah, and this example is actually the same, but for, uh, alarm detection system, it's a hundred and hundred and fifty. So we have two separate fees that are two separate pla- flat fees. One of them for small projects, one of them for large projects. Um, I, I presume, I, I don't have it in front of me, so I'm not, not sure exactly what they're referencing, but we do have some of those fees in our fee schedule. Already, which is for. You know, product of a certain size where the, the increase or whether there's an increase in. Um, the inspection time or whether there's an increase in the review time, we charge more for that too.
Right, but we, so we can't. Uh, my, I, again, reading through it and I know you dug a lot deeper to, I'm just trying to understand. So the square footage that's calcu- used to calculate. In the residential fee example of a forty square foot. Bathroom, we, we, we can no longer do that?
We, you need some multiplier. You need some multiplier. Um, either way, kind of. Where you have to, you know, you have the square footage and then you need some multiplier to come to your permit fee. And I think there's some understanding that this would always be a valuation. Uh, that, that needs to come from somewhere. Um, we, we, we can look into it and we can discuss with. Uh, with the legal team, but, um. We probably can't do a, a rolling, kind of, you know, just like per square foot. It's modest and then it's just more categories, discrete categories.
So, so that evaluation that you're referring to then is the IBC valuation that goes to the whatever the. The ta- the table that was in there and everything and that, and that, that is what is, I guess, being removed by the, by the new law.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Just out of my, uh, curiosity for information, since I've been on council, I don't recall the council being presented with the, an update to, to update fee schedules. Does, does council update the fee schedule or is that done by staff?
No, council adopts a fee schedule.
So it's been, been a while since we've.
We, we had a change, I want to say like two years ago, maybe.
All right, I, okay. Thanks.
So we've checked with DCA, have we checked with the Department of Community Affairs to see what their guidance is?
Yeah, there, there, there's nothing there yet and we, we talked with GMA and there's nothing there.
And.
Yet either.
I mean, this is somewhat typical. They've done it with other things where they pass a bill, put an arbitrary date. If there's, if we're going to be ready and there's value and it helps. And we feel like we should be ahead of this, we can add it to the agenda for our ta- our special called meetings. The last week of June, right? Like the twenty-sixth. I don't want to get the date wrong, but does that sound about right? Twenty-seven, something like that. Right, so if, if you feel like you can get it done in time to get it on an agenda. If, to me, it feels like there's not. A lot of flexibility here, the state, the state legislature, when this initiative, when they started this, they were gonna really. Control cities and what they could charge, and this is where they settled. Um, which again, probably means they'll try again in January to do more damage, but, um. Cause anyway, that's what they do. But, um. So if you feel like you would like to be ready for July first. Um, and that's possible, I also think if no one else is rushing to do it. That's going to mean something too. So just do the best you can. We just happen to have those two meetings, so.
Yep, thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Does it wait? Does it take a first and a second read? No, 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 no. The fee schedule take a first and a second read? No, okay. All right, that's fine. Thank you. Did anybody have transformative feedback they wanted to give? That they didn't give, like, don't do this or do that. Okay. Thank you. Should it be on consent or, no, it's too much. It needs to come back to us. Okay. I think it's too much. We probably need to go over it again. It'll be an action item, yes, but I don't think it should be on consent. All right, public comments? Anybody has a card? It's coming. You'll just hand your card. You'll have three minutes this time.
So, uh, all my questions to y'all before regarding. Espinoza and the city spending seventy-three thousand dollars at least defending that creep. I really do want you to share that with the public. It wasn't rhetorical. I mean, it wasn't like voted on and. I'm not sure how y'all. Arrived at that amount that you would cover or how much you planned to spend on him, but. I think we deserve to know. And, uh, some, as y'all already have used the word twice tonight, transparency, I, I hope that you will continue and be transparent and. Explain to us why and how much money we spent defending him, because, uh, it's a lot of money. Especially defending someone that you knew was such a creep. Meanwhile, um, I want to try and bring this to a level that maybe you can understand, I hope. Uh, I'll use an analogy, an example. Mayor Lynn, let's say that, uh. You owe Joe Sekunder, Councilman Sekunder, five dollars. Um, but you took that five dollars that he loaned you and you put it in the bank for safekeeping. So with him, when Councilman Sekunder approaches you for the five dollars. You would say, I don't know what you're talking about. I don't have five dollars. Knowing in fact it's at the bank. What, that's the same thing that the city is saying with these text messages. The city responded to me that they don't know what these text messages are, that there are none. For three years I've been trying to get them, but now I finally find out that Sharon admits that she knew that there are text messages, but. The phone company has them. They're not on the phone. So she's not going to give them. Do you think that's telling the truth? Do you think that's an honest employee? Do you think that's someone that's following Georgia law? No, you don't. So why do you keep wasting money defending Sharon, Ginger LaPage and Eric Shealy? They're not honest. Our city attorney and then the law firm that you have hired, Freeman Mathis and Gary. I don't think they're sharing these details with you. Because. They're very ignorant and they're understanding the law, but I've made it very clear. I'll read it again from Sharon's course materials. A government body cannot prevent the examination or copying of a public record. By contracting with a non-governmental body to inform any of its duties or functions. Disclosure is. Required. Disclosure is required. Yeah, so those phone records that Sharon is no, knows about and said that they don't exist. That's not truthful. And you're defending it and you're wasting taxpayers' money and none of you have shown any courage. I've been fighting this for three years and it's a shame. Do the right thing. Hold bad employees accountable. Fire them. Stop pretending that all is well in our city and fess up and do the right thing. Thank you.
Uh, Eric, do you have any comments?
I have no additional comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Uh, council comments.
We have one scout left. Thank you for hanging out there. Appreciate that. It was a small agenda. You got to come back when you have a whole bunch of stuff on. You'll really get a great, uh, experience there. Well, good for you. Well, we, you need to do public comments. We can get you on agenda, all sorts of, anyway. So, um, I, I do like to talk about, um, just the little civic lessons, because when people ask, you know, they can come up and ask us anything. About, and, and is it, is it going to know everything? No, but it's like, okay, we can know how to find things. And how to, how to, how do council members get things done as well, right? I'm, I just got re-elected my second. Four-year term. Um, but I like to say that it's like a four-legged stool of get it thing, getting things done. Yeah, I'm one person. The rest of the elected officials are the other leg. You have to get four votes to do things. Some things require vote, some things require staff work. And this, and we cannot dictate staff to do anything. We, if we run work behind the scenes, we work through Eric Linton, our city manager. And he works with staff and direct staff. Um, to a certain extent, but if it's a major policy or budget and so on, then we've got to do that up here at the council. And so on, and, and it's, it's very, very collaborative. It's very deliberate and sometimes it's frustrating. If you work in the private sector, if you work in a, for, you know, a commercial for, you know, for-profit entity where you want to just sit there and like. Okay, come on, why can't we do this? Um, so you'll, you'll find some people who are out there, they're screaming for things. Uh, but then at the end of the day, how effective are they? Right? And we're not at the national level, at the local level, but we do see people. Saying things and you have to work collaboratively here. If you see something that affects the change. Um, and, and, and the last kind of point I'll make is, um. There are some things that we are doing housekeeping and, and we are, we are reactionary. But then there's, we have a retreat and we can be strategic and we're forward-thinking as well. And, and you like to say, well, can I leave things here if I'm not even here on, if I'm not even up here voting? Ha- have we let, and have we budgeted? Do we have the plan in place? Do we have all these other things going on so that? I might not be here particularly, but things will still be moving on. Um, so that's where you like to look at things, um, that it's just not one person. Doing some watchdog thing. If, if you see something that's. So that's where you like to look at things, that it's just not one person doing some watchdog thing. If if you see something that's wrong. Okay, peel back the onion and say, well, guess what? I think maybe we'd have a better policy or a better plan or or a better budget and how to get that in place. So. Just thought I'd leave that out there. Thanks.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? You get to stay by yourself. All that passes unanimously.